Meeting of the Salina City Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Arbke.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll conduct our citizens forum. This is where anyone from the public can come up and speak on any topic, not on today's agenda. Please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and keep your comments to about two or three minutes. Seeing that there is none, we will move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the week of February 14th through the 20th, 2010, as National Engineers Week in the city of Salina. Dennis Coleman, president of the Smoky Valley Chapter of the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers, will read the proclamation.
Dean Coleman?
I'm here. Proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas, whereas engineers have used their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters to designing an informational superhighway, and whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we will look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the future. Whereas this year's theme of the event is discovering engineering. Now therefore, I am Lucy Larson, mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of February 14th through February 20th, 2010, as National Engineers Week in the city of Salina, and I urge all citizens to pay appropriate tribute to the engineers in our community for their contributions to our health, safety, and welfare. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this ninth day of February 2009.
Are there any events, or any projects, or any kind of things planned?
We have just concluded last Saturday, the regional math counts competition. It is a very, very effective competition to encourage math among our middle school and high school students, and we will be hosting the state math counts competition right here in the city of Salina later on this month.
Have a signed proclamation for you.
Thank you.
I'll remember these.
Engineered.
They were engineered, were they engineered by a colorful person?
Architectural engineer.
Okay, thank you. We have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 1st, 2010. Item 6.2, resolution number 10-6705, amending the city of Salina comprehensive fee schedule, amending fees for secondhand goods.
Does the commissioner wish to have an item pulled from the consent agenda? If not, a last for action?
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0. Development business.
Item 7.1, resolution number 10-6704, expressing support for the development of a planned multifamily housing project to be located on Armory Road west of Broadway.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Kansas Housing Resources Corporation administers a program of awarding low and moderate income housing tax credits on a competitive basis several times a year. They take applications from developers interested in doing a housing project for income-qualified individuals and families. And as part of that program, they want to see that the application does have local support from the governing body. This particular request came from Overland Property Group of Overland Park, Kansas. They are planning to submit an application to the Housing Resources Corporation, and they want to use the tax credits to help raise equity to complete the project. And they have done a number of projects throughout the region, in Missouri, Kansas, and Colorado, and in Salina itself. They did the 96-unit complex that is reserves at Prairie Glen down at the corner of Magnolia and Ohio. The project they've identified here is a parcel that's located just south of Kmart on Armory Road. And so if you, to get your bearings here, Broadway is north-south on the right, and then you have Arby's and Western Extra Light, which is in the former Food for Less building, and then directly to the north of that is Kmart. And the site that's been selected runs right in here. It's more of a rectangular shape like that. It's outlined in your packets a little better than that. And so we have submitted a project description for you in abbreviated form, a conceptual site plan and elevation drawings. This is more of a layout of how it would fit into the site, with Western Extra Light being on the left, the apartments directly north of that, and Kmart north of that, with KFC and Arby's out along Broadway. This property is currently Zon C3 Shopping Center District. Multifamily apartments are allowed in that district as a conditional use, meaning that the planning commission has to approve the plan for that on a location-by-location basis. The Drury Place Apartments, which are just west of Bank 6 on South Ohio, are located in a C3 district, and the Chapel Ridge Apartments adjacent to Central Mall are adjacent to a C3 district. We wanted to bring attention to the draft comprehensive plan, which shows the area between South Street and Broadway Boulevard as a transition area from more intense commercial development near Crawford, and transitioning into perhaps a different neighborhood as you work your way up to State Street. But certainly, the intersection of South Street and Broadway, that area is identified as a transition area. And the draft plan specifically notes that Broadway corridor is no longer the primary retail destination area for the city. That is now South Ninth Street, and the plan indicates that this is an ideal place to start redevelopment within the community. And as a neighborhood center, that is intended to have both a residential and a commercial component, and residential apartments are a secondary use that's encouraged in neighborhood centers. The specifics of this, such as, I guess if you could go back to the aerial, John, linking water lines together and access and what the specifics of buffers, those will all be worked out during the conditional use permit process. This is before you to see if you are supportive of their application to the state of Kansas. I think the other thing I would note, having worked with Overland Property Group over the years, is they've looked for sites for other projects, they've been encouraged time and time again not to look for another one in South Salina, but rather to look in an area that's in the city's neighborhood revitalization area. And this area was recently added to our designated revitalization area. So as part of their application that goes to the state, they are required to show that they have a resolution of support from the local governing body. The resolution that's attached is done in a format that meets the approval of the state, but it does include language that, obviously, the final approval and the plans for construction will be subject to having a final site plan and meeting local building codes. With that, I think I'd take any technical questions. The applicants are present, and they've got a brief PowerPoint where they can give you more details about the project. But I'd be happy to address any questions about the site itself.
Questions of Mr. Andrew? You say they have prepared a PowerPoint for us?
They've got a, that'll tell you, give you more details about the project itself and their background.
If I can just ask one other quick question. Dean, what did you say about, when does this go in front of the planning commission, or has it already gone before the planning commission?
What would happen is if they were successful and they got financed through the state, then they would have to come back and submit a detailed plan-
It has to be approved for them.
...that would go before the planning commission, and they would review the details of buffers and access and-
Are the businesses aware that this is currently happening?
They would be aware if a conditional use permit was filed. They would get notice, and there would be a public hearing and an opportunity for them to review the plans.
But as of right now, they may not know that-
I believe Western Extra Light knows because they have an option on their property. But other than that, I don't believe any other nearby property owners are aware.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
But I'll turn it over to Brett Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Brett Johnson, Overland Property Group, 7500 College Boulevard, Overland Park. We do have a quick little presentation here that we wanted to show you guys to give you a better understanding of what our development will look like. It's been about four years since we've been in front of this commission, and you guys are all new, so we're going to give you a little history on our company real quickly as well that might address any questions that you might have after we do that. So, I'm going to step over to this mic. Okay, well, I've got to do the password. First presentation, we'll walk you through. It has a brief little video bio on our company, as well as some illustrations of the reserves at Prairie Glen, and some details on what the Prairie Glen West apartments will look like. And then, once we're done with that, we'll take you through a 3D flyover of the site with the buildings on it. I think it has some sound to it. And we are looking at 32 units. The property will be financed with the sale of the tax credits, which are, as Dean pointed out, awarded on a competitive basis. There is not one difference between what we are proposing and what is standing out there on South Ohio. So, the same amenities. We will have a clubhouse. We always provide free wireless internet to our tenants. We will also have washer and dryers included with rent. And I'll quickly show this. This takes about a minute and a half.
Four years ago, a huge arson fire ravaged the senior community in Alheta just weeks before it was finished. Tonight, that center is rebuilt and open. Joining tonight's Peggy Bartlett live with how the center rose from the ashes. Peggy?
Every day's a different experience, and they're just something. I can't do any better than this. I really can't.
And that's just a recap of the 1,200 and some odd units we've built throughout the area. The majority of those are affordable housing. We have a good track record with Kansas Housing. We also have a good track record here in our hometown. Three of us in Overland Property Group are from Salina, so we think we have a pretty good feel for this market. This was our first project we ever did with Dean's help and his staff. So, with that being said, we're going to show you a 3D rendering of our property, and then if there's any questions, we can walk through that at that time. I'll zoom out here so you get a good understanding of where we're at. We are looking at Broadway. You'll see the Kentucky Fried Chicken where this hand is, and over here is the Arby's, and then the former Food for Less, which is now Western Extra Light, and then Kmart, which is partially cut off here. But as you zoom in, you'll see it, as you come up on the entrance, we will have the same clubhouse, which includes a fitness center. We have a media room, business center within that. We will have an onsite manager as well. And it should be pointed out that our management company has been the same management company from day one at Prairie Glen on South Ohio. We'll also be managing this facility as well. So we should have some synergies there. Each building contains 16 units. I believe there's a floor plan in your packet, two- and three-bedroom units. Typical size is 950 square feet for a two-bedroom, and 1,150 square feet for a one-bedroom. They are, appliances are energy efficient. We have, and in some cases will look at doing on this project, if approved, used the concrete-filled forms for our walls. We have a project identical to this in Liberal, Kansas, which provides tremendous efficiencies on the utility bills for the residents. You gain a lot of points with the state of Kansas when you do those types of things, and we would be looking at that as well on this if the budget permits it. Plenty of green space. On this project, we will have a basketball court, playground, gazebo area, and usually a cookout area as well. And you can see that we've plotted room here for a additional third building, which would come in a later phase, potentially. But we instructed Jeff Gillum, who's our architect, to go ahead and lay that out so that in the event we do have more demand than we originally anticipated, that we would be able to expand this another 16 units, bringing it to 48 units in total. Some questions I'm sure will be asked about how we will separate from Western Extra Light. Sorry, our land comes down to about where this fence would be proposed. Some type of screening, obviously, would be in order in between our parking and their And that would be straight down that line. As far as the units are considered, this is a standard three-bedroom unit. As we look from the top down, we've got a two-bedroom, I'm sorry, three-bedroom, two-bath layout here. We've been able to figure this out over the past few years since we built Prairie Glen 1. We've now been able to go in and do things like granite countertops in some instances. We've put in ceramic tile where typically we've had linoleum in the past. There's a lot of efficiencies that we've found by building the same product repeatedly. And those are some things that you don't typically see in affordable housing. And in fact, if you talk to our management out at Prairie Glen 1 and 2, we get a lot of people that come to our apartments looking to rent that assume that their market rate, and they find out that they're overqualified from an income standpoint. So that's a great complement to our design, to be known as a very high-quality apartment, but also designated for affordable housing. On the rents for this type of unit, on the Prairie Glen West property, our initial studies are showing that we can get rents as low as $500. This will be targeted towards tenants that make 60% or less of the area median income. There's a lot of factors that play into that. We can go as low as 30% median income in some projects. I doubt that will be the case on this one. But we are looking at rents that would start around $500 for a two-bedroom unit. Any questions on the design or the layout?
It didn't hit me till you were reviewing this. I got to thinking about the one that is currently on South Ohio. No basement, so what happens in the event, is there like a storm shelter, or where do these people go in the event of bad weather?
Well, we have a safety plan that has gone through at the time that they sign a lease. We have, you know, encouraged them, obviously, to go, if they're on the second floor, to get down to an interior first floor, and in their safety plan, that's spelled out for them. They can also go to the clubhouse, but no, there are no basements in any of these units.
So when they go to the first floor, they go to their neighbor, or?
They would go to a neighbor's unit.
Okay, okay. Any questions of Mr. Johnson? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open it up at this time for public comment. Seeing that there is none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 10-6704, expressing support for the development of a planned multifamily housing project to be located on Armory Road west of Broadway Boulevard.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 10-6704, in support for the development of a planned multifamily housing project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0. Administration.
Thank you.
Item 8.1, second reading, ordinance number 10-10532, authorizing a contract with Mid Kansas Underground for fire protection on property located outside the city limits.
Sorry, we almost spilled water. This was passed, this ordinance was passed on first reading, February 1st. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any additional public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 1010532, authorizing a contract with Mid Kansas Underground for fire protection of property located outside the city limits.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 10-10532 on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Arbke.
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Larson.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, second reading, ordinance number 07-10402, amending chapter 33, Article 3 of Salina Code pertaining to junkyards and junkyard dealers.
This ordinance, too, was passed on first reading February 1st, and since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any additional public comment? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number 07-10402 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 07-10402 on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Arbke.
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Larson.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.3, resolution number 10-6703, authorizing an addendum and change order number 3 for the solid waste landfill facility cell number 5, construction project number 09-2769 with Larkin Excavating.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our current contract we have with Larkin for our landfill cell 5. They are delinquent on their current contract as of last Monday. Our current contract discusses $500 a day in liquidated damages to, since they're late. And we've been in discussions with them since November, but most notably here in January to figure out how to really resolve this, and what impacts and what issues arose during the time to see what we should do to move forward, basically. And while staff does disagree with the number of weather days and extra days of work they requested, staff believes some compromise settlement of these claims is warranted. And thus, we've gone to them with a proposal that basically, we asked them to give us their best-case scenario. If they could get started on February 15th, when could they get it done? So, they came back with a good schedule that was a lot better than they proposed initially, and basically, those are outlined here in the blue sheet. Tenet notice to proceed 2/15, substantial completion of the landfill cell, which basically, that gets us to be able to start the KDHE approval process by 3/31, March 31st, and then a total completion of everything by April 19th. Liquidated damages would again be assessed after that 31st date, at $1,000 a day, because it's getting more crucial that we get this done. And then, liquidated damages after the final completion date would go back to the $500 a day. Compromise settlement, we looked at for $5,000, where they would pay that in their damage, and then we'd move on, basically. They agreed to all these terms and were ready to get started. And they did ask, though, if they could beat that date, the March 31st date, if they could have a chance to work off those liquidated damages. So I said, "Well, I guess, I mean, that is a really tall order for them, but if they could actually do it, that would be a very good thing." So, I said I would propose that to the commission today. And that is something that is up to you guys, to the commissioners, if we want to even have that in there. They've agreed to everything else already, but the incentive clause was something that they asked if I could run that by you. So I guess in light of that, I'll take questions about that.
Questions of Mr. Stack.
Has he had an incentive clause to meet their original deadline, or they would still?
This is their revised March 31st date, basically.
What was their original?
January 31st.
Okay. So they want an incentive contract by a couple of months missing their original one for these issues? Okay.
Yep. If you want to look at it that way, that's correct.
Just trying to make sure.
Was there an incentive clause in the original contract?
There was not. No, it was only a penalty clause.
Commissioners, just to be clear on this, too, the incentive clause doesn't actually increase the price that the city would pay. It simply would be to work off liquidated damages if they would exceed the revised project deadline.
Correct.
Mayor, I might mention, if I may, quickly, you do have a revised version at your place, and the key reason for that was in paragraph 3, which relates to that incentive. Just to be abundantly clear, that the March 31st date would be the date regardless of that resumption of work date. As you probably noted, that resum, the targeted resumption of work date is February 15th, but there are still weather considerations that would potentially affect that. That's not a, the substantial completion date as far as the incentive is not a moving target. It is March 31st, and it is only to the extent that they come in ahead of the March 31st that the incentive would be triggered, rather than a floating date out there. So, the parenthetic was added just to say that regardless of the resumption of work date, to be abundantly clear, that that March 31st is a set date, not a moving target. And I, as you can tell, we developed that paragraph 3 separately so that it is, as you determine whether you wish to include that or not, it can be simply extracted by removing what is now section 3. The rest of the document stands, even if that is deleted.
And you'd gone back and calculated that they, they actually were working every day that they could on the Friday.
They were. That's correct. They gave us, we looked at every weather day and every report, and they worked a lot of days that, you know, it rained, or was misting, or it was tough to work. So we feel like they gave it a real honest effort. But there was a time at the end of November where it was Thanksgiving, but there was about 10 days that we felt like that they could have worked and possibly could have gotten it done. And that's why we feel like the $5,000 or $500 a day, that's 10 days of liquidated damages, basically. So those are the only days that we disputed, basically, we disagreed with. They feel like they could have done some work on those days. Whether or not they could have got done, it's hard to say. But that's where we came up with the $5,000 in the liquidated damages.
Did you say January 31st was the original?
It was. That's correct. Yeah, the way this worked was if they could have gotten the cell liner done, which they're about 10 days away from getting done, then a lot of things can be done during the winter. They could have put sand on top of the liner. There's a lot of things that, you know, weather doesn't have near the impacts that it does, but they missed it by about 10 days, and that's where we're at right now.
So we're giving them an incentive, or potentially giving them-
They're asking for it.
-an incentive to be 50 days late instead of 60 days late.
That's correct. And that is just, they just wondered if they could work off their damages, but, I mean, that is totally, if that's out of bounds, I totally understand, because it's, we're way on that.
Commissioners, one other factor, too, in all this is that the contract with them had certain preciseness- had certain preciseness of elevations required, which is fairly typical, but we found too, we had some instrumentation issues on our part that, we're talking like a tenth of a foot, I believe is correct.
Yeah, the tolerances for dirt were supposed to be within a tenth of a foot, and those proved to be very challenging.
So that also contributed to them going back, and it took more time, we believe. I think we have some agreement, it took more time with them to get to exactly where they needed to get to, and so that was also a factor. And then again, when you have a hard winter and you hit a certain date, and then the hard winter sets in, it makes it a little bit difficult. So we really felt that was all, what they're asking for in the end was pretty fair when we really looked at all factors.
Didn't they know those tolerances going into the contract?
Yeah, they knew the tolerances, but what happened is, is we were responsible for measuring those, and we found that, quite honestly, our GIs, or GPS equipment didn't get us to those tolerances. So that was a little bit more difficult. It had minimums and so forth, but there was a tolerance of plus or minus, and with the minimum not being met, the regulatory, state regulatory agency said you still got to meet the minimums. So we got into some of those discussions, so they said, okay, we'll try to get there. In essence, it took a little bit longer than maybe it should have, just by virtue of trying to meet those that way. So that actually was one of the contributing factors as well.
What kind of a predicament has this put us in?
Well, the current cell is nearing capacity, and when we went to try to figure out exactly how much capacity we have, it's a little bit of a, I mean, it depends on how much we get and how much, how high we can pile it, and how steep we can pile it. And we also have a buffer area that we're trying to save for certain types of waste so that we can just push that into the new cell when we're done. So it's, it puts us in a predicament, but we think we can get the state to help, to allow us to increase elevation or to deal with it, basically. It gives us about six more months.
Oh, it does? So in the event they don't meet this deadline?
Yeah, I mean, we have enough buffer, we have enough margin, yeah. But it's, yeah, that's why that March 31st date's, I mean, it'd be great if they could meet that, because it really doesn't hurt us too bad. If they meet that date, it doesn't cause us near the issue as if they don't meet it till August, then it gets us, it gets us into a lot tougher predicament.
Well, it sounds like they, for the most part, worked to their capacity. I know you'd mentioned there were some Saturdays.
Yeah, they worked a lot of Saturdays, Sundays, holidays that they could, when it wasn't raining, so, I mean, they gave it an honest effort.
And I'm okay if they gave it an honest effort, and there's some, there's some question as to whether maybe we had a part, at least minimally, in the delay. I'm okay with, I'm okay with this.
Well, I think that meets them halfway. I think we met halfway.
It's a compromise settlement, that's for sure.
Yeah, I agree. Any other questions of Mr. Stack? Thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. If there is none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move we approve Resolution Number 10-6703 for addendum and change order number three with Larkin Excavating Incorporated for the municipal solid waste landfill facility cell five, construction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 10-6703, authorizing an addendum and change order number three for the solid waste landfill facility cell number five, construction project number 09-2769 with Larkin Excavating. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Angel voting nay.
Item 8.4, approve the raw water supply study.
Ms. Tesker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In July 2006, the city declared a water emergency when the flow in the Smoky Hill River reached historic lows. To address this type of shortage and other possible shortages, the city commission authorized HDR Engineering Incorporated to conduct a raw water supply study to identify and recommend sustainable alternatives to meet the city's water supply needs through the year 2060. Three study sessions were conducted with the city commission at critical times to receive input and direction to move forward with the study. Staff has completed the review of the 314-page study, and HDR has completed all requested changes. One final step is to receive city commission approval or to accept the raw water supply study. Once the study is accepted, HDR will provide 10 copies of the final report, three CDs that will include all the spreadsheets, AutoCAD files, and modeling that they utilized for the project. The short-term capital improvements as presented in the raw water supply study were included in the sub-CIP and five-year capital improvement program that was approved last Monday at the city commission meeting. Staff has identified two alternatives for the city commission's consideration. The first to be approve the raw water supply study dated February 2010, as drafted by HDR Engineering Incorporated, Wilson &amp; Company Engineers and Architects, and Lane Christiansen. The second alternative would to, be to approve the raw water supply with any additions or modifications to the text that the city commission deems appropriate. This time, I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of staff?
Does approving the report mean that we agree and adopt all the recommendations in the report?
No, it agrees in concept that we agree to that. One of the procedures that were in the sub-CIP was a feasibility study for the south water plant area. That will get very specific into the detail of what we will actually do there, which could make minor changes to what's in the report. But in concept, yes. Does that answer your question clear enough?
If the answer is yes, like you said at the end.
Yes, it's the general direction that we intend to move. It may get tweaked slightly as we learn more details through specific studies and designs.
So do we, I mean, is there a difference between accepting the report and approving the report? Does accepting give us more flexibility down the road?
For that type of report, I'm not sure it really makes much difference, because as Martha said, it's a general guidance documents, what it is. And as we go down the road, I mean, it's a long-term document too. We may find certain things change, and we want to vary off of that some. But basically, it says that at this point in time, you're pretty supportive of the general aspects of the document and where it's taken us. It doesn't obligate you in any way to do a big project or anything later that it might consider, and each of those are separate individual policy decisions that you'll make as we get to those points in the process. So you're not obligated in any way to have to do something later. You always get that choice.
But will, when we get to that point, will the blue sheet we get say that it is in conformance with the raw water study that we previously approved?
Yeah, we would, because we would expect to compare any actions to that. Now, what we would also say, though, is we would go back, I mean, let's presume that we're a few years out, maybe. We would, should be looking at all those factors consciously at that time, and if we feel there's a change or another aspect we need to look at, we would certainly bring that up as well, because we want to make sure, we recognize those documents require, quite honestly, a lot of resources for certain things that need to be done, and we may or may not be in a position to do all that. So we need to look at each one very independently, each decision.
I kind of had the same thought, if sometimes when you approve something as a concept, then it becomes these 10 succinct steps from, you know, a feasibility study to a this to a this, that are chain reaction, and then what you hear is, it's kind of hard to put the brakes on all this now, because we've invested on all of this. And I don't want to assume that was Commissioner Angel's uncomfort, but that's, you know, but a long-term project is just that, and I guess we've had a similar, not exact same thing, but we've had a thing that's come through the commission that has had multiple phases, and you still have an opportunity to vote on it. But the pressure is a lot higher when you've approved at some point in time all of the concepts and theory in general. So accepting versus approving is a little bit of a different feel of language.
So can we just change the date? Can we just change the word?
Yeah, from our perspective, either action's fine. If you want to simply accept a report, that's fine. Staff would use that report in the same way in the future, and you'd still have those individual actions as we go along.
In the event that it's not accepted or approved, what happens? I mean, all those, yeah, no, I know.
Well, I would say that we're moving forward with four of the items in the short-term plan as it is in the the sub-CIP and capital improvement planning. The construction of the south well field was identified and as unfunded, so those items are in there. The next round are long-term and out, you know, 20-plus years, and the exact time when those would occur would be really dependent upon demand. So if we don't approve the report, I think it, I have to decide, do I get final reports or...
Well, if you don't approve the report, I think it provides a much bigger question. And, I mean, there were a lot of resources put into this to provide us with a raw water master plan. We need a raw water master plan, so...
Basically, it's just change the word. Are you okay if we change the word?
I'm fine with approve or accept. That's why I tried to kind of interlink those words when I discussed it, because I feel both are meets the purpose of where we would move forward.
My thought process was, four, five years down the road, there's a new commission, and they get a blue sheet that says you need to do this because the well water plan was previously approved by the commission in 2010, as opposed, it feels a little more constraining with that language.
Sure. And that's why, as a staff, we're obligated to take a look at each of those actions and see, does it still make sense today, you know, what was said five years before, 10 years before? And a lot of these things really are somewhat of a floating timeline, so...
Very dependent upon growth and how the city falls into place, so I am fine with accept or approve, whichever you feel most comfortable with.
Thank you.
Have you had a chance to look at the final report?
Yes.
In detail? Is there anything you would add or take out?
The actual report is 314 pages.
I understand.
And I have read every word of that and made about three dozen changes this last round of improvement. Some of the information that's in there is during the course of the project that we did, but at this point in time, I do not have anything I would like to add or delete.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. Seeing that there is none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move that we accept the raw water supply study dated February 2010, as drafted by HDR Engineering, Inc., Wilson &amp; Company Engineers and Architects, and Lane Christiansen Company.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the raw water supply study. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor, I'd like to move we recess into executive session for 40 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interests in the matters, and reconvene at 5:25 PM.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0. Do you expect any action?
We do not.
We are in executive session. Thank you.
Good job, David.